What can I do in a relatively short period of time that will make that payment go down, which would make people feel very good?
Mm-hmm.
Well, you can do what FDR did, which is find ways to stretch the payment out over a much longer period of time.
Thus, the idea of a 50-year mortgage.
Yes. So Bill Pulte, who is a senior Trump administration official, also happens to be the grandson of William Pulte, who has helped build the Pulte Homes homebuilding empire.
Wow.
Apparently goes to Trump and shows him this poster. FDR on the left, 30-year mortgage; Trump on the right, 50-year mortgage. And Trump buys into the idea, I guess, and posts it on Truth Social and seemingly embraces it as a proposal.
And just explain how a 50-year mortgage would work to actually lower people's monthly housing costs.
So we're taking some guesses here because the Trump administration did not put out a thorough white paper on this. But the basic gist is the cost of the home would be spread out over 50 years instead of 30 years. So if you are buying a $500,000 home, for instance, you're paying that purchase price over 50 years instead of 30 years. And so the portion of your payment that is the home is going to be lower in each monthly payment. So let's just say you're buying a $500,000 house at current mortgage rates and you put down 20%. Your payment would go from about $2,500 for a 30-year, right, to about $2,200 for a 50-year.
Per month.
Per month. So you'd save about $300 per month.
And just to say, $300 a month times 12 months in a year is nearly $4,000 a year. That's real money.
Yeah, definitely that's real money, babe. Imagine if you got a $4,000 raise.
Yeah, you'd be pretty pleased. And so in theory, what would a 50-year mortgage do to the US market if it came into existence and if it lowered home monthly payments by the amount we're talking about?
It's hard to say exactly how it would impact the market, but it would turn up the heat. It would make more people want to buy. It would make more people feel like they could buy.
Mm-hmm.
That in turn might get more people want to list because they feel like, oh, well, I'm going to finally get the offer I really wanted. That in turn could get home builders to increase the pace of new construction because the lines are growing again. So it would definitely stimulate the housing market in a great many ways because more people can buy homes now.
Right. So you can see why this would be an attractive option for the President of the United States at a moment when everyone's telling him there's a real affordability problem in this country and it's typified by the unaffordability of the housing markets.
Oh, totally. I mean, if you're a president who wants to do anything for affordability, coming up with a thing that will change someone's monthly bill is really appealing because it would lower payments and it would lower them in an obvious way that people could see in their budget.
And so what is the response to this idea once Trump posts it? That image of himself and FDR and the concept of 50-year mortgage?
People just annihilate this idea. I mean, they say this could make things worse, not better. People from all across the political spectrum converge and say, this is just an incredibly bad idea.
We'll be right back.
The Daily is supported by BetterHelp, committed to helping clients with issues ranging from relationship challenges and goal setting to grief and depression. Learn more at betterhelp.com-public. And by Story Worth. Each week, Story Worth emails a loved one a question about their life. After a year, Story Worth will publish their stories and color photos into a book to keep for generations. Learn more at storyworth.com. Get the story firsthand with The Daily from The New York Times, distributed by American Public Media.
Support for Radio IQ comes from Riverdale Village, a development destination for recreation, commerce, and creativity located at the base of Mill Mountain, Roanoke. Learn more at riverdareoanoke.com.
Three years ago, Iranian police arrested a young woman for not wearing her hijab in public. She died in custody. Today, thousands of women across the country are openly defying the law despite the risks.
This new generation realized that there is no way to reform this regime, and they decided to live whatever they want. They are more brave than us, and they are paying for the expenses.
That's on the next On Point.
Tune in weekdays at 7 for On Point. Hi, I'm Nikki, Radio IQ's new Director of Content and Operations, reminding you that you can take Radio IQ with you wherever you go. Simply download the Radio IQ app and listen to your favorite NPR programming and local news. Enjoy.
This is The Daily. A few days ago, when President Trump proposed the introduction of a 50-year mortgage, he challenged a bedrock of the American housing market and financial system. Connor Doherty is a housing reporter for The Times. So Connor, why is everyone panning this idea? What is so wrong with the 50-year mortgage?
Okay, so the problem is, it looks like it saves you money. Let's return to our example. You have the $500,000 house with the current 6.2% mortgage rate. You go from $2,500 to $2,200. You've saved yourself $300.
Right.
Okay. Now, in the first example, 30 years, you're going to end up paying about $500,000 in interest. You pay basically the house in interest. By a $500,000 house, you pay about $500,000 interest.
A lot of interest.
Yeah. Okay, now let's go to the second example. You take that house and you buy it over 50 years. Well, now you're going to end up spending about $900,000 in interest.
Wow.
A significant amount more, so almost a million dollars in interest for your $500,000 house.
Well, you're paying way more in interest than you are for your house. You're basically buying your house twice, but you're paying the bank for a whole other version of your house.
Exactly. I mean, and the reason is it's 20 more years of paying interest. And not only that, there's some questions about whether or not it would even really save you money. So for instance, if banks are going to be doing 50-year mortgages, the interest rate on the 50-year mortgage is almost certainly going to be higher than on a 30-year mortgage. And the reason is a 50-year mortgage is much riskier. If you're lending someone money over 50 years instead of 30 years, there's a much higher chance that something will go wrong in those 50 years.
Mm-hmm.
On top of that, if you are buying that home after 50 years, it takes you a lot longer to start owning real equity in that home. As anybody knows, looking at their mortgage statement, in the first few years, you're mainly only paying interest. And in the last years, you're mainly only paying principal. So it would take you 20 years to start really having significant equity in the house.
Right. And I guess we should probably mention the reality that if a lot of Americans started to take out 50-year mortgages, and we assume many people don't start taking them out until they're in their late 30s and early 40s, which is when a lot of Americans now embark on homeownership, a lot of people are not going to make it to the end of these mortgages. I mean, they're going to die, right?
Unquestionably. Now, what's really striking about the critiques of this idea is just how much of it is coming from within Trump's party and some of Trump's closest allies. You have Laura Lumer, the conservative activist, saying lifetime mortgages. You have Marjorie Taylor Greene, who is one of the most strongly associated with America First. Well, she says, you'll be in debt for life. You have Christopher Rufo, another conservative activist, saying if you have a 15- or 30-year mortgage, you'll actually own your home, whereas a 50-year mortgage, you're never going to own your home. Essentially, you're just renting it from the bank now.
Interesting.
Many people from all across the political spectrum sort of recognize this as a very risky deal.
So is it fair to say that this is probably not about to become the new gold standard of American mortgages?
I think it's fair to say they're going back to the drawing board on this one.
So if this idea isn't really going anywhere at the moment, what else is coming out of this administration that would potentially confront the unaffordability of housing right now?
So Bill Pulte, the Trump administration official, said this was just one of several ideas. Another would be portable mortgages, where you could take your mortgage rate with you to another house. That would hopefully open up inventory because a lot of Americans right now have lower mortgage rates and want to move but aren't going to because they don't want to have to buy a new house at a higher mortgage rate. So that might encourage more people to move.
Right.
So it would unstick the housing market potentially.
Hmm.
Another one would be assumable mortgages. So that's kind of the same idea from a different direction. If you buy a home and the person who owns the home has a killer-low interest rate, you might be able to assume their mortgage and their mortgage rate, you know, when you buy the house. So that would encourage someone to move, that would encourage someone to buy, et cetera.
Are any of these practical? Are they achievable?
Uh, probably not. Um, what you're seeing, though, is all the same type of idea, which is how do we fiddle with the debt?
Hmm.
How do we fiddle with mortgage rates in such a way that we can attack the payment either by extending it with a 50-year or essentially winding back in time to give people access to mortgage rates that reflect mortgage rates of 10 years ago?
Mm-hmm.
But there's one big thing we're missing here, which is that the reason housing is so expensive is that we have a really bad housing shortage in the country. We stopped building housing, essentially stopped building housing after the Great Recession and have never caught up. So if you want to have any real impact on affordability, you have to eventually attack that problem. And attacking the mortgage rate stuff, all it really does is make it easier for more people to buy what is basically the same number of homes.
Right. It attacks a symptom by definition.
Exactly. And the problem with the housing shortage is that it takes a long time to have any impact on, and it's not a thing that the president has a lot of control over. There are state regulations for how you build housing. There are local regulations for how you build a housing. All this stuff that just breaks your brain, the White House doesn't have much control or even influence over. You've seen Florida, Montana, Texas, California, Oregon, Arizona, Massachusetts. All of these states have had some kind of effort to essentially lower their housing regulations to make it easier to build housing in hopes that they will inspire home builders to go through a building boom. But these solutions all take a really long time, and they can also be controversial.
Right.
You know, in California, for instance, they just passed a law that changes zoning. It makes it much easier to build higher-density housing in existing neighborhoods. Well, the legislature who passed that bill has been working on a version of this for 10 years, and it only passed after people fought like crazy against it because they don't want taller buildings in their single-family neighborhoods. Even if all these things happen after going through all that difficult politics, it'll still be years before developers get projects approved, before they start building them, before there's enough units to impact the supply that people would really notice in prices. So this work is just grinding hard work that's also kind of thankless. And it feels like the states have kind of run out of options, and so they are doing the hard work. So let's say all these states, California, whatever, Texas, actually have a huge impact on the supply, and actually they lower prices for people.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Let's say it's a resounding success. That resounding success is unlikely to happen in anyone's political lifetime.
Hmm.
It's certainly not going to happen before the 2026 midterms, and it's very unlikely to have a huge, huge noticeable impact on prices by 2028.
Got it. From everything you're saying, the real solutions to the American housing crisis of unaffordability right now isn't flashy, it isn't quick, it's not a two social posts with two presidents on it, it's not a 50-year mortgage. It's this very unsexy, difficult, slow, brain-breaking work of changing the way zoning works and stimulating local housing markets, and it's probably not going to be coming from the White House.
Absolutely right. I think the federal government can be a huge part of this story. I think there are lots of things the federal government can do to help these efforts that are happening in state and local governments, but they're not going to be the author of them.
Well, Connor, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
The Daily is supported by Made in Cookware. Made in Cookware is crafted by chefs for use in restaurants and home kitchens around the world. Their cookware can be found at madeincookware.com. And by Progressive. Progressive Commercial Insurance protects small businesses from retailers to tradespeople. Progressive covers a variety of business needs with a range of coverages. More at progressivecommercial.com. Distribution of The Daily is made possible by American Public Media.
The Daily is powered by the journalism of The New York Times and is distributed by APM, American Public Media. You can go deeper into the stories you hear on The Daily at nytimes.com/thedaily. That's it for The Daily. I'm Michael Bobaro. See you tomorrow.
Hi, I'm Regina Barber. Think about how many hours you're listening to Morning Edition, All Things Considered, or Short Wave in your car while commuting, running errands, or cruising around town. Now, something else to think about? Your vehicle can help bring you the public radio programs you enjoy and depend on. You can make that happen by donating a vehicle you no longer need to this station. Here's how. Go to radioiq.org and click the Support tab and select Vehicle Donation.
You're listening to Radio IQ on WVTF Roanoke, WRQ Charles City, Richmond, WVTU Charlottesville, WVTW Charlottesville, WVTR Marion, WISE FM Wise, WQIQ Spotsylvania, WIQR Lexington, WEHC Emory, HD3 of WURV Richmond, and on 92.5 Richmond and 94.9 Fredericksburg. Radio IQ, a listener-supported community service of Virginia Tech, on your smart speaker and online at radioiq.org.
Three years ago, Iranian police arrested a young woman. Her crime? Not wearing a hijab in public. Masa Amini died in police custody, and her death sparked a movement among other young women in Iran.
This new generation realized that there is no way to reform this regime, and they decided to live whatever they want. They are more brave than us, and they are paying for the expenses.
Today, more women across the country are openly defying the government's hijab law, and they risk heavy fines or even imprisonment, like what happened to Masa.
Each time that this Iranian woman was in the public without a hijab, it's a revolution.
Are they having an impact?
I think things are changing in people's minds. Like I see my father, who used to be so, you know, bruchal with me for hijab, now changed. The regime lost its legitimacy in people's minds.
I'm Magna Chakrabarti. That's up next on Point. Stay with us.
Live from NPR News in Washington, I'm Ryland Barton. The UN Security Council has backed a peace plan for Gaza, authorizing an international force for the next two years. NPR'S Michelle Kellerman reports the US is calling this a significant step for the Middle East.
US Ambassador Mike Waltz says the world has the power to, quote, "douse the flames and light the path to peace." He praised this Security Council for backing a plan to set up a board of peace led by President Trump and to authorize an international force to coordinate with Egypt and Israel.
The resolution today provides troop contributing countries with the framework they need for moving forward with the International Stabilization Force and global financial institutions the mechanisms they need for channeling investment.
The US ambassador calls this resolution "just the beginning." Russia, which proposed a different draft, abstained from the vote. Michelle Kellerman, NPR News, the State Department.
President Trump has changed his mind and is now urging congressional Republicans to release files related to the sex trafficking investigation into disgraced financier Jeffrey Epstein. It comes after lawmakers pushed through previous attempts by Trump and Republican leaders to stop the effort. California Democratic Congressman Ro Khanna discusses the vote on a bill to force the Justice Department to release the files, which could take place tomorrow.
It did surprise me, but he saw the math. He caved to the coalition that Massey and I have built over the past five months.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our 7 o'clock PM session of Roanoke City Council on Monday, November 17th. I will ask our clerk, Ms. McCoy, to please call the roll.
Mr. Volason.
Here.
Ms. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Hagan.
Here.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Here.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Here.
Mr. Nash.
Here.
Mayor Cobb.
Here. And a quorum is present. Thank you. We are delighted tonight to welcome a whole bunch of scouts into our midst, and they are going to lead the pledge of allegiance. So I'm going to invite Mr. Garland, where are you, to come up, and he is going to introduce all of the scouts who are with us tonight, and then they're going to come up and stand up in front to lead the pledge of allegiance after I lead the invocation.
First, I would like to thank Mayor Cobb for hosting us after what sounds like was a very long day and for answering all the questions, and I learned a lot myself. So I've got Troop 2G, the girls from Troop 2G, and then from our PAC 2, we have the Bears, Weebolos, and our Arab Flight Scouts.
All right.
And would you like us to come up?
Come on up. Yeah, let's get arranged pre-pledge-of-allegiance locations. Please join me for the invocation. This is written by African-American theologian Howard Thurman, who was ordained in First Baptist Church Gainsborough, right here in Roanoke. Open unto me light for my darkness. Open unto me courage for my fear. Open unto me hope for my despair. Open unto me peace for my turmoil. Open unto me joy for my sorrow. Open unto me strength for my weakness. Open unto me wisdom for my confusion. Open unto me forgiveness for my sins. Open unto me love for my hates. Open unto me thyself for myself. O God, open unto me. Amen.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If y'all just turn around and you can, why don't we fill in here for a big group picture?
I don't think I'm going to have any shit tonight.
All right, listen, I need this group over here to squeeze in. Squeeze in.
Good luck.
All right. Everybody, if I can't see you, can't be seen. All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. One, two, three. All right. Thank you very much.
Wait, one sec, one sec.
One more, one more.
Okay. One, two, three.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Well, we are really excited to welcome everyone tonight, and we are going to move right into our presentations, which include recognition of winners of the 22nd Annual Fire Prevention Week Art Contest. So I'm going to invite Chief Hoback and Hope Escobar from Fire EMS for the presentation. And we have a lot of people, a lot of kids to celebrate tonight.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Vice Mayor, City Manager Turner, thank you for having us today. We celebrate this every year. It's been 21 years since we started this project of recognizing our talent within our community. We've had some great successes. We've had some saves, small fires that people have recognized. But this year, the challenge was fire prevention through battery safety. And I will tell you what our young folks actually grasp from that and what they put into art is amazing. It really is. We have a few winners today. We did have 13. I think we have three, maybe four, here today to be recognized, and they will also be recognized before the school board. So with that, I will turn it over to Hope Escobar, who led the project.
Thank you, Chief. Tonight, I'm joined by a couple other members in our department. So Chief Hoback, Deputy Chief Foley, Deputy Chief Stone, and Fire Marshal Smith as well. As Chief mentioned, our theme this year was charge into fire safety, lithium ion batteries in our home. And the students that are here and all the students that participated definitely rose to the occasion. They did a phenomenal job spreading these lifesaving fire safety messages. So I'd like to invite anyone who would like to help us give out the gift bags and certificates up to the front. And then, students, whenever we call your name, please come up to be recognized. We'll start with our special awards. We had the Fire Marshal's Choice, Nala Davis, a third grader from Roanoke Academy. Next, we had Buddy's Choice, Ivy Prim. She's a fifth grader at Highland Park Elementary School. For Chief's Choice, we had Macy Moore, a fourth grader at Highland Park Elementary. And for the Community Risk Reduction Choice, we had Marley Zawatski, an eighth grader at James Madison Middle School. Moving to high school, I believe we have a teacher accepting the awards for a lot of these students. First place was Jazari Jordan, a 10th grader from William Fleming. Second place, we had Safira Matheny Milanese, a ninth grader at William Fleming. And for third place, we have Jamir Clark, an 11th grader from William Fleming as well. Next is our middle school division. In first place, we had Harper Angus, an eighth grader from Woodrow Wilson. Second place, Grace Strawn, a seventh grader at Woodrow Wilson. And third place, Hattie Martin, a seventh grader from Woodrow Wilson. And then for elementary school, first place goes to Christian Lipscomb, a fourth grader at Roanoke Academy. Second place, Olive Hamer, a fifth grader from Monterey Elementary. And third place goes to Kate Green, a fourth grader at Highland Park. And to all of our student artists, those who are here and those who could not make it this evening, their creativity definitely makes Roanoke safer, and we're so proud of the work that they've done. Thank you, guys, for supporting programs like this that strengthen our community and help us build a safer Roanoke. Thank you.
And before we take the picture, we do have the group from the Rockingham Insurance, who has been financially sponsoring this program since its inception. And without their generosity, we would not be able to do this and make this happen. So thank y'all very much.
All people go to the side.
Oh, no. You're a noob.
Come on.
Come over here.
Thank you.
Please put on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next on our agenda, we'll move into our public hearings. Our first public hearing is a request of Mar Rowanoke LLC to rezone the property located at 5060 Valley View Boulevard Northwest, official tax map number 2490111, from CG Commercial General District to INPUD Institutional Planned Unit Development District. Ben Crew is the agent spokesperson. There he is. And we have one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion and second.
Ordinance?
Second.
Thank you, Councilmembers Nash and Powers. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance to rezone the property located at 5060 Valley View Boulevard Northwest bearing official tax map number 2490111 from CG Commercial General District to INPUD Institutional Planned Unit Development District, subject to the development plan and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you. We'll note that this is coming to us from the City Planning Commission, who voted zero to four to approve this. There was one person absent and one who refused himself. So the motion failed to approve this on a zero-four vote. Just, that's a point of information for tonight. I'll invite Mr. Crew to come and share information. And then, as always, I know you're great at being available for questions.
That's correct. Perfect. Thanks, Catherine. Good evening, members of council. Ben Crew with Balzer and Associates, agent on behalf of this request. I've got a team with me this evening. You'll hear from a couple of those folks that are with me this evening. So Joaquin Luasis is with me, who's the owner. Justin Hayek, who's the counsel for the owner. You'll hear from Justin in just a second. And then Michael Rothstein, who's with Genuine Care Consulting Group. He's here as well as the operator. So we've got a couple of folks that you'll hear from. I'll share a couple of things. So, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all this evening. We've taken a few steps to be at this point. We want to make sure that we're sharing the appropriate information with you. You know, obviously, this project has generated some unique interest up to this point. And our team's going to walk through the specifics of, you know, what this use is and what it's not. So we want to make sure that that's clear for all of you all as you consider the request this evening. You know, we've taken different steps, you know, took the opportunity to have a continuance prior to the planning commission meeting so that we could have some initial conversations to make sure we understood the questions, concerns, and then any misinformation about what the request is or what it isn't. Before this evening's amended application, number one, a lot of details and effort went into that to make sure that we had all the information shared as part of this particular request. And so we're going to reinforce a few of those, you know, critically important items this evening with you. So at this point, I'll be quiet and invite Justin up to the podium to share some background about the property. And then I think he's going to invite Michael up here for a couple of statements. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions, as always.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for being here.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council, thank you for giving me your time tonight. My name is Justin Hayek. I am here to represent Mar Rowanoke LLC, as we already discussed, at 5060 Valley View Northwest, to rezone to Institutional Planned Unit Development INPUD. And that would be consistent with the recommendation of the city staff. The city staff recommended this rezoning. I would like to clear up a few misconceptions first. This has never been a retail building. It was initially the Employment Commission Office back in the 90s. It was then renovated to become a medical clinic, an outpatient medical clinic, first operated by Virginia Premier and later by Centara after their merger in 2021, I believe it was. Centara vacated at the end of 2023, and we then subsidized another outpatient medical clinic called New Horizons, you may be familiar with. And they actually performed outpatient behavioral health and addiction services for low-income populations at that location. Since then, roughly August 2024, the building has been vacant. There's been minimal interest, other than several inquiries from a proposed marijuana dispensary in the area surrounded by vacancies. We rebuffed the interest from the marijuana dispensary because we thought it would be inappropriate use for that space. Instead, we decided, given the limited commercial interest and the pressing needs within this community for substance abuse facility, that this would be an ideal location for it. We anticipate the economic impact of this project would be substantial. Once fully operational, we think that it would create roughly 50 new jobs with an annual payroll exceeding $3.5 million due to a large number of professional medical staff. The total investment into renovating the building would be roughly $3 to $4 million. And this brings me to my second point that I've seen as far as misconception in this facility. It will not be a high traffic, excuse me, a high-traffic or disruptive center. This is a quiet hospital-like environment. There won't minus the sirens of an emergency room. It provides compassionate door-to-door patient services. The clinic operates with 24/7 staffing, comprehensive medical oversight provided by a professional operator. And Michael will speak more to that momentarily. We are also adding green space to the rear for quiet reflecting space because the parking in the rear just simply would not be necessary. It would be surrounded by tall privacy fencing. We believe this rezoning request offers a beneficial solution for the community, a responsible use for a currently vacant building and an otherwise difficult area to attract tenants. It's a vital service for the resident, and we respectfully ask for your support in approving this rezoning for this purpose. I have with me a representative of one of our potential operators, Michael Rothstein, to further elaborate on the operations of this facility. Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, members of the council. I much appreciate your time and allowing me to speak today. My name is Michael Rothstein, R-O-T-H-S-T-E-I-N. I am the owner and chief operations officer for Genuine Care Consulting. We are a licensing and consulting company for the behavioral health space. I'm in recovery myself, just celebrated 13 years this past July. That's how I got into this space. I've also owned and operated my own facilities at this specific level. I want to talk a little bit about what this specific facility will look like and operate like. I will use some acronyms that are generally used in this space. I'll try and explain some of them if you have questions then. More than happy to explain what those are. This location will be an ASAM 3.7 and 3.5 behavioral health facility. That is a high-intensity inpatient drug and alcohol treatment center. Length of stay vary from 14 to 28 days. And we service members of the community suffering from alcoholism and any drug addictions. I want to give you a rundown of how a facility like this gets licensed, and then I'll go into the day-to-day operations, what that looks like for clients and for staff. Every facility in the state of Virginia must be nationally accredited. We go through CARF, which is the accreditation of rehabilitation facilities. It's a national and international organization that reviews policies and procedures. They also review the actual layout of facilities to make sure they are safe for staff, safe for clients, and safe for those around the facility. Once a national accreditation is obtained, we would apply with DBHDS, which is the licensing board in Virginia that handles substance abuse and mental health facilities. That process is typically a six-to-nine-month process. We work with the state auditors to come out, review our policies and procedures, walk the facility. We explain the program, provide them a staffing model. They would then give us our license. 3.7 level of care clients are typically coming to us referrals from either hospitals or family members or themselves calling in. When a client calls in, a thorough pre-screen is conducted first and foremost to make sure that that client meets our level of care. So there's a pre-screening process. Things like severe mental health, violent offenses, those types of clients are not accepted at a facility like this. We would typically work with referral partners in this immediate area or even further out that are more well-equipped to handle those types of needs. Once the pre-screen is completed, it's reviewed both by the medical director and the clinical director to confirm what the admissions rep sees on the screen, that they are fit for admission. When we admit a client, we are what's called a bed-to-bed transfer facility. So we provide transportation. We don't want the client, because they are more than likely under the influence of some sort of substance, driving themselves. And we typically don't like them driven by family members or friends because they could potentially be the ones that are helping them or enabling them, I should say. So we provide transportation from wherever the client is to our facility. When they come in, they go through an intake process. They're met by either a nurse practitioner or doctor on staff. They're given a full physical. We go through what's called a bio-psychosocial, get their history. Nurse comes in, checks their vitals, and then they are shown to their room. As we mentioned, this is a 24/7 facility. So meals are prepared for the clients. Laundry is done for the clients. That would include their bedding, their own clothes, so on and so forth. A typical day for a client is usually an 8:00 AM breakfast, followed by group therapy with a licensed clinical social worker. 24, I'm sorry, lunch, afternoon groups. In that time, they will also see case managers who will help them with their next phases. So what we call discharge planning starts from day one. What we don't want is clients to graduate our program and have nowhere to go when they leave. So we immediately identify if going back home after a 28-day program is sufficient. If it is, then we will get them situated with an outpatient counseling center or an intensive outpatient counseling center and allow them to go back home. We provide that transportation. If home is not a good place, we work with Oxford Houses, sober livings, long-term outpatient programs, PHP, which stands for partial hospitalization. And we work with those facilities to provide a door-to-door transfer as well. So when they come in, they're transported. When they leave, they're transported. A lot of questions typically come up in these types of hearings as far as what the facility will look like from the outside because people have concerns. And I can understand those. If they haven't actually seen a facility like this, what goes on? When you drive by this facility, it will be no different than driving past an assisted living facility or an old age home. Clients are not allowed to come and go as they please. It is a closed-door facility, meaning there's key fobs on the exits. Obviously, there's emergency exits. But clients are not allowed to come and go as they please. We do not allow visitors. So there's no family members, no friends. Nobody is allowed to come visit it. And this is for the protection of not only the clients, but the family members as well. So the proposed changes also include a nice outdoor area for the clients who do smoke. There will not be lines of clients outside smoking cigarettes. There will not be lines of clients waiting to come in the doors when they open at 8:00 AM like an outpatient clinic would be when people are waiting to be seen by a doctor. When you drive by there, you'll see 10 to 15 cars that are already parked in that parking lot from the staff. And then a few cars as clients may come in and out through the transport. So that's the blue area you see up there. One of the questions that I always get asked, if a client leaves early, what we call AMA or ACA, against medical advice or against clinical advice. And that does happen from time to time. Client makes a decision. They want to come in. They're having second thoughts. They're not ready, so on and so forth. We do not allow clients to just walk out the front door and go walking around aimlessly. We will work with case managers to try to find them other facilities to go to. If we cannot successfully get them into another location, they are provided the same transport from where they're picked up. There's a sign-out process, just like when you leave a hospital. So you can't just walk out the front door. They have to sit with medical. They have to sit with clinical. They would get all of their belongings packed up, and then one of our drivers would escort them back to whatever location they were picked up from. I talked a little bit about the staffing pattern, and then I think that's about my time. So this type of facility is overseen by a medical director. There will be a nurse practitioner on site full-time, 40 hours a week. It's usually nine to five, 10 to six, depending on the flow of traffic. We have nursing staff around the clock. So that will be RNs and LPNs that are doing room checks, checking vitals, administering meds. This will be a clinical director who's an LCSWC or an LCPC, overseeing all the clinical components of the program, and then what we call BHTs, behavioral health technicians. These are CPR-certified staff members who help the clients get to and from group, to and from breakfast, lunch, dinner, so on and so forth. They're outside with them during smoke breaks. Typically, they are peers. We call peer recovery support specialists in Virginia. These are employees that may have had their own addiction issues and have gone through a peer certification class, usually two to three years sober themselves, that want to give back. So that's the staffing pattern there, and I'm happy to answer any questions now or sit down and go from there. Thank you again for your time.
Any questions right now?
Thank you so much.
Right. Thank you all for that background and helpful information. And if we can just leave that visual up, I think that will be helpful for reference. At this time, I'm going to open the public hearing and ask if we have any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter.
Yes, we do. We have two speakers. Eric Sishaw. Shashaw. And Brian Kearney.
Good evening, City Council. Eric Sishaw, President and CEO, Roanoke Regional Chamber. Chamber address 1948 Franklin Road, Southwest, Suite 200, Roanoke 24014. Good to see you all. I know we've had some good conversations on this the last couple of days, and I appreciate your opportunity to be able to speak with you on this matter. Again, you all have seen our opposition to this from the business community standpoint when it came to planning commission. My remarks during planning commission last week, I don't need to reiterate those. Just a few thoughts in regards to this, for your consideration on this, to deny this application would be, first and foremost, the chamber is not against the services, is not against the need, is not against the challenges that folks in our region are having. That is not what our opposition is. I want to make that very clear. I think we need to be thoughtful to the consideration of the future of Valley View and the good things that city economic development and other regional partners are trying to do to revitalize Valley View. It's such an important part of our city. It's a connector to our city. It's right by the airport, which makes this the welcome mat to our city. I think it's just important to remember the thoughtful consideration around the future of Valley View and the importance of that to our region. One thing I want to point out that was pointed out at planning commission last week was the land use. Once this is rezoned, the land use follows it. So while this particular applicant certainly has a lot of great intent, if that particular applicant likes to move on in the next couple of years, well, we've set the precedent for what that land use could be. And I think that's something to consider as well. Our argument is not about traffic, certainly not at all. Certainly understand that this would be less traffic, but that's not really the opposition when it comes to this. My request of you as city council in regards to this, if you were to deny this application, would be to encourage the applicant to leverage the chamber when it comes to this particular topic. And if there's a way for us to bridge the gap for them to meet with other regional partners without putting them on the spot, you and all of us know what those regional partners might be. If there's an opportunity to help bridge the gap, to help that app, to help this applicant be able to learn where a better facility could be for the regional folks in our region that would need these help, I think that's the role that the chamber can play. The chamber is, you know, my role is not economic development. We have a great economic development staff. You all know that. I would love to be able to come back for this particular property and be able to say, you know, in support of the applicant and say, hey, we love the use of this. This is the highest and best use for this particular facility and how it aligns with the plan for Valley View and the plan for the region. So I think that's really just, to sum it all up, you know, our opposition is not in regards to the services, not in opposition to the need, but really the highest and best use for this particular property. Understand that it has been tough to fill that. Again, I'll offer if the chamber can be a bridge or a convener or a help in that matter. I think that can be our goal. Certainly can't make the decisions on what goes into that spot. But if we can be the convener, I know that's where the chamber excels best. So with that, again, our opposition on that has, I think, been made very clear over the last few days. And appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all. Good to see you all, as always. And it's rare that the chamber has to be in opposition of this. So that's one thing important to remember. So thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Sishaw. Mr. Kearney, welcome.
My name is Brian Kearney. If I could speak here, I'm losing my voice today. I apologize. I'm attorney in Lexington, and I'm used to being on this side. I'm used to being on that side. I'm also a city attorney in Buena Vista, so I'm used to being over on that side of it. But I'm here today because I represent Dominion Lodging. Dominion Lodging has three hotels that are surrounding by the center. There's the Valley View, Best Western, Comfort Inn, and then Mainstay Suites. All three of those properties are owned by a local family. This is what they do. They're locally owned. Their world headquarters is up in Daleville. They have, you know, three people in the entire office. That's how they make their living. They've invested in this property. They were the first ones to invest in this property. When they first took over, Marriott had an exclusive. And Marriott said, nobody wants to have a hotel in this area. They've built three hotels. There are now at least two more, or three more hotels in Valley View. So that's what they're concerned about. It's not the use. That we're objecting, the use is very important. It's the location of it. We are very concerned about the safety and the impact on the hotels and that this is the hub, the retail hub coming into the city. is the hub, the retail hub coming into the city. People come here. They come to shop, eat, spend the night, you know, get on the airplanes. And that's, this, you know, is a better use of this facility would be to have some sort of retail establishment, not a treatment facility. And if you look at treatment facilities, they'd normally are either part of a hospital or by themselves, during a campus setting, out by themselves. We don't have to worry about any kind of incident happening. My clients are very concerned about any kind of incident happening to any of their patrons. They're going to be coming in and parking. As you know, right now, it gets dark at 5:30. We don't want to have any concerns about that. They currently, you know, we laid out a bunch of this in a letter, so I'm not going to regurgitate that whole thing to you, about some of the other issues we have with this. But, we just want you to know that we're very concerned about it. They've been long-term clients, you know, long-term, great corporate citizens of Roanoke. They paid tax the last year for over $550,000 to the city. So, they are concerned, and they would hope that you will follow what the Planning Commission said, and deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Excuse me. Are there any other citizens wishing to be heard on this?
No, it's not.
Okay. Oh, there apparently is another person. If you could, you could state your name and...
Sure. My name's Joshua Mason. Thank you to the council, Mayor Cobb. I'm here representing Callion Hospitality. The company that I work for owns currently six properties here in Roanoke, developing a seventh. Just finished a $9 million construction project on the Spark on Thurlane Road that recently just opened. We're slated to complete $10 to $12 million in renovations on our local properties within the next 24 to 30 months. Our concern echoes that of Dominion as well, with the use of the land. It's not the services provided. I'm in great support for the services provided. Before I went into hospitality, I worked at the city's 911 center for 14 years. I'm very well familiar with the challenges that substance abuse have in this community. There's a lot of people impacted by it. But, there are also other perceptual concerns that impact our ability to provide hospitality, to attract people to our properties. And while the services may be great and genuine, and facilities may be secure, the public's perception of what these facilities are and the environments that they're in will impact our revenue. The property that I directly run averages $5 million a year in revenue. Our entire portfolio in the Roanoke area averages roughly $30 million in revenue. It will be impacted. So, that's what I'm here to raise my concern about in regards to our company. Again, we're in, with the chamber, with commerce, we're more than willing to support the services that are provided by this organization. They are greatly needed. We just don't think that this is the correct space and the correct use for this land. I would also say that a marijuana dispensary is not the correct use for that parcel either. I think there's better retail opportunities out there than that as well. So, I wanted to make sure that we were on record for that as well.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
All right. I think that is all who signed up to speak. So, I'm going to close the public hearing, and then open up conversation with council members for questions or comments. Mr. Ballison?
From Planning?
Yes.
Catherine Gray. Oh, there you are. Ms. Gray, what's the reason why this has to be rezoned, even though it was previously an outpatient clinic?
So, with it, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor Gomago, our members of council, our city manager, there are, within our zoning ordinance, charts of land uses, property uses. And all of the different uses that come into the city of Roanoke have to be fit into that, into that chart, into categorized. This is a use, that's a newer use from about 2024, when we simplified some parts of our zoning ordinance. And the type of use that this is was deemed to fall within this category, regional housing services. The main reason that is, is because of the scale of the number of people who would be there, and the temporary occupancy of the people being less than 30 days. If it was greater than 30 days, then it would have been deemed as group living, which we see with things like nursing homes, assisted-living facilities, and things like that. That's the main reason.
You guys are categorizing it as something similar to what, but I think the only one with that is the rescue mission, correct?
Somewhat. And so, in the broad overall use, yes, except that in amended application number one, the applicant actually limited what that use could be to regional housing services, limited to residential substance use disorder treatment center licensed by the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and related supportive services. So, that is the only portion of that use that they could have on that property. I would also remind council that this use is subject to a special exception, which means it would have to go, if approved here tonight, it's still not approved. It would have to go to another board to receive a specific approval. On the left side of the screen, on their development plan, you see a list of uses. So, any one of those uses would be allowed, except for the particular ones that require special exceptions, such as this one.
I have a couple of questions. Our region's been doing a lot of work in the last five years around a collective response. And there's been significant asset mapping work done about a continuum of care, which includes addiction prevention, all the way through recovery, and recovery housing. And this concept, I think, falls somewhere in the midst of that continuum. One of my questions is, and this is really, this is to us as a council, it's to us as a community, it's to all the departments that this type of work might intersect with. How much attention are we giving to this collective response effort and the continuum of care plan that's in place, to make sure that strategically, when these opportunities come before us, that we're on the front end of figuring out location, land use, property use, services provided? It's not clear to me that we're all on the same page as a community on this. I think we're still very siloed. So, that's concerning to me, because just from a baseline, this seems to me to be a service that we could benefit from, that people could benefit from. So, I'll start there. I want to ask historically, I mean, this, the first speaker gave a pretty thorough history of what this building has been used for, and starting out with an outpatient medical clinic, and then a New Horizons outpatient mental health clinic, and then since then, it's been vacant. Is, so, what I'm curious about is historically, with these other uses of this building, I recognize they haven't been residential. They've been outpatient. Have there been any previous issues, problematic issues, property-related issues and concerns that have come up with these being primarily medical service, a medical service facility?
No, none that we're aware of.
Okay. Do we, anybody in the city, do we know, have there been problems related to this property with it serving as a mental health outpatient service or medical provider? I'm just kind of asking a hypothetical question, because I don't know the answer to it. I mean, we could probably research and see how many calls there have been, or things like that. But, I want to go back to the land use question, and maybe this is a combination response, and Mr. Sichao raised this. Once this is rezoned, it remains what it is rezoned for. Could someone from Planning elaborate on that for me?
Zoning is something that is decided by council and remains with the property unless it would come back to council to be zoned again. With our PUDs, our planned unit developments, again, we have a list of uses on the side. Any of those uses could be either allowed by right, or could be allowed by special exception, depending on the uses. And let me see if I can see something big enough to read. In your report, I think you have those listed out. What you see in those uses is a combination, if you drew like a Venn diagram, and you put all of the uses that are allowed in CG currently, which is our most expansive types of uses, are in our CG district, and you put the PUD uses and overlap those, the area of overlap are the ones that are mostly listed on this plan. And then with the addition of the substance use disorder treatment facility. So, if it is rezoned, then that does stay with the property, unless it would come back to council.
And that would only likely come back to council if the proposed residential center ceased operations, or there was a, it was...
It may never come back to council, as the number of uses that are there are, I'll just read through the uses, because I think you will find it is very expansive. Dwellings, short-term rental, bed and breakfast, group living, hotel or motel, business service establishment not otherwise listed, financial institution, laboratory, dental, medical, or optical, laboratory, testing or research, medical clinic, office, general or professional, outpatient mental health and substance abuse clinic, by special exception, live-work unit, mixed-use building, studio, multimedia production facility, bakery, confectionery, or similar food production, retail, building supplies and material, retail, contractor or tradesman shop, general or special trade, general service establishment not otherwise listed, workshop, club, lodge, civic, or social organization, community center, eating establishment, eating and drinking establishment not abiding in a residential district, eating and drinking establishment abiding in a residential district, entertainment establishment abiding in a residential district, entertainment establishment not abiding in a residential district, health and fitness center, meeting hall, park or playground, place of worship, recreation outdoor, theater, movie, or performing arts, artist's studio, community food operation, community garden, daycare center adult, daycare center child, daycare home child, educational facilities, business school, or non-industrial trade school, educational facilities, college or university, educational facilities, elementary, middle, or secondary, educational facility school for the arts, fire, police, or emergency services, government offices, or other government facility not otherwise listed, hospital, library, museum, post office, regional housing services limited to residential substance use disorder treatment center licensed by the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Development Services and related supportive services, supply pantry, transit station, broadcasting studio or station, accessory uses not otherwise listed, accessory dwelling, electric vehicle charging stations, home occupation, personal service, outdoor recreation facility lighting, or sports stadium lighting by special exception, and solar energy system. So, that list of uses is very much in keeping with the kind of uses that are allowed there by right now. But, it also includes this other particular use, which is only allowed in the NPUD district. And the only way anyone can ever have it within our city currently is to rezon a property to NPUD. I will mention too, that institutional uses are something that are scattered throughout our city, in all of our districts, including our commercial districts.
Oh, that's certainly comprehensive. So, a different kind of question. We have recovery housing throughout the city, and it's various lengths of stays. Are those, where do we currently find those? How, what zoning are those under currently? Or, it may be various types of zoning, because I know some of them are in residential neighborhoods, some of them are actually in houses that have been repurposed?
It is in various types of zoning designations. I will say that if this facility had, for example, fewer than 12 people, that would be allowed by right in each of our, what we call our mixed commercial district types, our multiple-purpose districts throughout the city. And they wouldn't be coming to the city council to ask for permission to do this. It's simply the number of people that they have in the facility that requires that they ask the question to be able to have it here. And I think that has to do with the level of care that you see. In a lot of the facilities that you're talking about, the level of care is after they have been to an initial treatment facility. And those tend to be scattered more throughout and smaller.
So, remind me again, maybe someone from the company, what's the capacity for, I know the length of stay will vary from 14 to 28 days. What is the capacity for the number of people that could reside there?
Right. So, we're requesting effectively a capacity of 80 beds. We do not expect to actually, at this point, at least fill 80 beds, and that would vary depending on demand. It's hard to say at this point, given the long runway for construction and everything else, exactly what the demand would be. We're talking, you know, 18 to 24 months from now.
And this is in the current footprint of the building?
Yes. It's about 20,000 square feet.
And where, would the green space be added?
Yeah. So, the green space is that blue in the rear. And actually, based on recent discussions we've had, that it would be much larger than that. That, we intend to take up a nice portion of the area behind the building and turn it into a garden. The amount of parking there is just not necessary. And also install a sidewalk in the front. There, currently, there's not a sidewalk on that street.
Thank you. Another question is, I heard several people speak tonight. They're concerned about the impact this would have on neighboring properties. Do we have any evidence-based data on that? And that may be in relation to other places where this has occurred? I'm just curious about that, because it's one thing for me to hear perceived impact, and then to understand whether that's ever realized.
If I may, this is not going to have flashing neon lights saying, "Recovery here."
I understand.
You understand. So, this is possibly not even going to be labeled. It is going to be, the intent of it is to be very quiet, very serene, where people can get away from the environment in which they are suffering, and recover in this space.
I think that the last question I have is, and Mr. Rothstein, you alluded to this. So, going back to that continuum of care in our community, in our region, we've had some issues with facilities bringing people in for treatment. Not necessarily housing them in their treatment facility, but housing them in hotels, in houses, privately owned in the city, for anywhere from 30 to 90 days. And some of these facilities do not have a good discharge plan. And so, And some of these facilities do not have a good discharge plan, and so many of these folks end up becoming unhoused, unsheltered, and contributing to a larger concern, which is, you know, counter to us wanting to get people housed. So I think you were pretty clear in addressing this, that discharge planning is critical to what you do, making sure that if someone came here from another locality, that they're returned home to that locality, or even if they're from Roanoke, they're returned home, or that you help them secure other housing. Can you talk a little bit more about that process?
Sure. So we typically work with the VAR accredited sober living. That's the Virginia Association of Recovery Residences. So we won't refer to the types of facilities, some that you're referring to. That is a common theme, unfortunately, in outpatient across the country, where you have a centrally-located outpatient clinic, and then they go into surrounding towns to house their people. So we first and foremost only refer to VAR accredited facilities. Those are overseen by DBHDS as well, so that we know that they have good operators in place, 24/7 supervision, so on and so forth. One of the things you mentioned about referring back out, you know, from where they came from, sometimes it could be a local resident in Roanoke that maybe going back to familiar places and things is not a good idea, and so we can work with other referring agencies in nearby counties to give them a fresh start in a VAR accredited house with some outpatient treatment. And the reverse of that may be true as well. We may look at other counties, too, where maybe they've tried there, and they're in a bad family situation, or whatever the case may be, and maybe a relocation to a VAR accredited after their stay with us is best for their long-term sobriety.
Thank you. In your consideration of Roanoke, it could be related to this property or not related at all. In your consideration of Roanoke, did you spend some time researching the breadth of this continuum I'm talking about in terms of what we provide and what resources are available and how you all might fit into that? And it's okay to say, I wasn't aware of that until tonight.
Sure.
That's fine, too. I'm just trying to get a sense of how you explored this, the city and this region, and why it was important for you to look at this location.
Sure. So I'm typically brought in as a resource, as a consultant. I can tell you that there are no facilities in this area of this magnitude that can treat these people in this vicinity. And as far as the referring partners are concerned, we typically do that after we identify. What we don't want to do is start talking to our referral partners and get denied its zoning, and it never happens. So that's typically down the line, once the use is approved, then we start working and identifying referral partners. I can let Justin, if he wants to do anything else on that, but...
No, I will say to second what Michael just said, that, you know, it's... There's a maxim that all roads lead to Roanoke and West Virginia and Virginia, Western Virginia, and that's true on multiple fronts. So this facility, while focusing on this immediate area, I think is also vitally important for the broader area of West Virginia, Western Virginia and West Virginia.
I think one of the tensions that we're living with in Roanoke is that we are a place that people come to for access to all sorts of things, and that brings with it a lot of benefits and a lot of economic impact, as well as a lot of challenges. So I think we're trying to balance our decisions based on that, and that creates kind of a conundrum of what's going to be the most meaningful and effective in the long term in this larger continuum of care. Did you... Was this the primary location you looked at, or did you consider other locations as well?
No, we are the owners of this location.
Yeah.
Yes, so...
So you all...
Yeah, so I will say, once Centara vacated, we subsidized New Horizons, which was the low-income medical clinic for a while. We effectively subsidized half their rent while they were trying to get their grants in order. It didn't work out for them, unfortunately, and they were forced to vacate this location. I believe they're still in their original location here in Roanoke. And we obviously began marketing the property. There was not a lot of interest, and this particular use is important to me personally from a familial perspective, and I thought that being able to give back to a community in a manner such as this over an issue that has affected so many people, my family included, would be important, as well as the owner, Joaquin Luasas. He has a history of low-income housing for 20-something years. That was what he did, and he also thought that this would be, not philanthropic, because it is a for-profit venture at the end of the day, but it's a service that is appropriate that would allow us to give back to the community in a space that frankly has had no other interest and no other use for it up to this point, other than a medical clinic, and no medical clinics right now are interested.
Well, I think you can tell from my questions that I'm torn about this, because I see a lot of benefits to it. I'm not convinced totally of a negative impact. I'm curious about 80 beds. That's a lot, and I'm more curious about how this all works within the larger continuum of care in the community, which is not necessarily your responsibility to answer, but it is our responsibility as a community to answer that. So I just wanted to reflect my tension, and thank you for your extra time in answering my questions.
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Other questions? Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just had one question, maybe a couple, actually, to the Maro Roanoke folks. I was curious if you own any other treatment facilities and where are they located, if so, or...
No, we don't, and that's why we would bring in a professional operator here. We would effectively be acting as landlords at this location. Yeah, we would be bringing in a professional operator, such as the Genuine Consulting Group, to run the facility.
Maro Roanoke LLC would be the operator of the facility?
No, no, they would not be operator. They own the building.
Who would be operating the facility?
Genuine Care Consulting right now is the one who's working with us on that. Michael, the other one who was...
I'm sorry, I thought you just provided consulting services. So your company runs these facilities?
Yeah, I'll let him speak on that behalf, but yes, he's an owner and operator.
So yeah, I guess the question would be to you then, sir. How many other facilities do you or your subsidiaries own or operate, and where are they located?
So there's two in Virginia. One is in Warsaw, Virginia. It's called Warsaw Recovery. And then there's the Freedom Center, which is in Richmond. Those are both the same 3.5 level of care that we are going for. I don't have any ownership in those, but I helped create all of the policies and procedures. I helped staff the property, so on and so forth. So we were consultants on those, but I don't own and operate those.
Would own and operate this facility?
They're bringing us in to do that. That's correct.
As an operator or an owner?
Sorry, as an operator, yeah. The exact, the exact business breakdown of how it would work, we frankly haven't crossed that bridge, because we're not even zoned to do this yet. But we would be bringing in Michael and his team to run the facility.
And are you based in Florida also? Or you're based in Florida?
Yeah, we... The ownership of the... Yes, we're based in Florida, Miami.
So do you have any, as the... Do you run or own or operate any other treatment facilities?
No, we don't. We don't own any, any treatment facility.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. And what's the relationship with Mr. Luasas?
I'm his counsel.
Gotcha. So he owns the company?
He owns the company, yes.
I see. Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Hagan.
Yeah, so one of the things that we've heard is like that this property is vacant. I'm wondering, since you brought it up, because Virginia only allows for medical cannabis dispensaries right now, what was the reason behind not going with one of those?
Why did we rebuff... We did it because at the time, New Horizons was occupying... First, we don't think it's a great idea to have a medical dispensary there. One. Two, we, at the time, New Horizons was operating under half the facility, and we were subsidizing the other half. Jonathan Stewart, the CEO of New Horizons, they're working on mental behavioral issues and substance abuse. We went to him and said, listen, a dispensary wants to go in your back door. And he said, please don't do this to us, because we are literally trying to help these people on one side. It's not really beneficial for us to do substance abuse in one half of the building and sell marijuana in the second half of the building. And so we agreed, and we were... In good faith, we rebuffed the approach from the medical dispensary, the marijuana dispensary, in the hopes of doing the right thing. And, you know, unfortunately, New Horizons didn't work out, but we're continuing to try to do the right thing.
And I guess the other question, for other, you know, treatment facilities like this, do you see them so close to an airport? I have a concern about, well, planes, you know, like the sound that planes make with that and just how that would be possibly mitigated.
To my knowledge, I would have to look at a map to see the one in Richmond specifically and how close it is to the airport there. The other one, no, it's not near an airport, so...
I don't particularly have any more questions for you guys. I think actually the location is not a bad location, because it is, as you can see, right at the end of that Valley View exit. It doesn't... I mean, I had to go back and figure out what building it was when I went to go look at it. I knew that it was the VEC back in the day, but I had no idea what it was currently, or even the last five, 10 years. Why? Because you go flying right by when you get off on Valley View. And I think it is a secluded enough location, and I also worry about, okay, if we can't do it here, then the next location is going to be closer to a neighborhood. I mean, where they are is pretty isolated from neighborhoods and things like that, and I know that, you know, we'll probably get a decent amount of opposition if we're closer to a neighborhood. I think that this is... It was previously a clinic. It should be a clinic. I was worried about the NPUD zoning and limiting what it could be in the future, but it's clear that it's basically, if I wanted to go in there and open up a restaurant tomorrow, I could do it, and I wouldn't have to come here to the council to ask for a rezoning. And I think that was a little bit of my worry, was that somebody like, you know, say, we all want Trader Joe's, right? Let's say Trader Joe's says they wanted to be there. So I'm actually... I look at also the fact that this is 50 jobs in this, roughly 50 jobs that would be coming to this area and what the economic ripples of that are. But I also look at that as, there's 80 beds that can help us start to get out of this mental health crisis that we have. I mean, the state of Virginia has talked for years about how they're going to increase mental health, how we're going to get help for the opioid addictions and things like that. And, you know, we had an opportunity to do that with Catawba Hospital, and we saw the state say, no, we're not going to do that. And so we're really on our own out here in Roanoke, and I do think that it is absolutely a service that we need here in this area. So I really... Obviously, this is a hard one, just like it is for probably everybody on this dais. I just don't... I don't see the negative outcomes as some people may see them, and I think that this is actually a benefit to our area, because we need and desperately need these types of services. And anytime these types of services come into this city, we are going to have to go through this process. We have to do, we have to do a rezoning, and we have to do the... It has to go to the BZA for special exception. So it doesn't matter wherever we put this, if you guys have a different location, or we helped you find a different location, we still would have to go through the same exact process. And I believe that our staff has taken a good look at this, and I agree with my staff. And so I think, you know, we're going to make our vote here in a minute, but I just wanted to let people know where my mind is on this, and that, you know, do you want to have this next door to you in a neighborhood? Probably not. Is this a location where it's inane enough that it doesn't affect the businesses around it? And let's be honest about Valley View for a moment here. What are the retail, the other retail on that road right now is a Dollar Tree and an Ollie's. So it's not like it's Macy's or something that's going to rebuild this area, and I don't think that this location and having another empty building in Valley View helps the Valley View area at all. I think it's just like we have the Sears on the other side of the mall that's sitting there empty, and that hurts Valley View a heck of a lot more than this building that honestly, I wouldn't know from... I just wouldn't know, didn't know, until you guys actually brought it up to us. So I just wanted to say that, and I'll let everybody else do their thing.
Well, I think we've finished our comments. Now, Madam Clerk, I think we're ready to call the roll. And just to be clear, a vote, an aye vote is in support of rezoning, a nay vote is against rezoning. Everybody, I'm accurate in that, correct? Okay, I just want to be clear.
Sorry.
All right.
You ready?
Am I clear?
I think you're clear.
Am I clear?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Ms. Valison.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
No.
Mr. Hagan.
No.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
No.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
No.
Mr. Nash.
No.
Mayor Cobb.
Aye. All right. Thank you all very much. I'm going to take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back for public hearing number W B Z Chicago, It's American Life, I'm Robert Glass, stay with us.
At any given moment, there are thousands of people listening to this station across the Commonwealth of Virginia. You could have your business, organization, or event mentioned to all of those smart and engaged people. You'll also be helping to support all the news, stories, and music you hear on public media every day. Find out how to become a corporate sponsor by emailing us at wbtfcorporatesupport@vt.edu. Support for Radio IQ is provided by Wild Birds Unlimited Charlottesville, bird food, feeders, gifts, and guidance, 29 North near Ryo Road. More information at mywbu.com/charlottesville.
It's It's American Life, Act One, A House Divided. There's a spot in Mackenzie and Bella's house that's perfect for eavesdropping on the parents. Small sitting look on the second floor, at the top of the stairs. Where the parents are downstairs talking, in the kitchen, or in their bedroom, sound travels up, making its way through the stairwell.
So, you can hear everything that's going on. Or you sit in the walkie-dos right across the door. So, you're, they'll have the door closed and you can hear murmurs. We're kind of in the shadow, like, I know what's going on, but I don't know the exact thing.
That's Mackenzie, she's 17. The girls' parents, Jenny and Bella, almost never fight. They're one of those families that like spending time together. They do arts and crafts together, go on road trips, and don't kill each other, that kind of family. The girls are close to their parents. So, all this disagreement is abnormal in their house. But since last November, when President Trump won the election, they met a stalemate that would live in the town and should self-deport, return to Mexico, where he hasn't lived in 30 years. The girls exist on the periphery of this stalemate. Every new high school lives during the day, dipping in and out of the parents' discussions at home, at night. Here's Bella, she's 15.
Every once in a while, when I'm like watching TV or something, I'm sitting on the couch while I'm watching a show, and I'm like, I've been there 13 minutes, and I'm like, okay, cool, that's what's happening, and I'll turn my show back on.
One of our producers, Valerie Kipnis, was interested in how families are making this decision over whether to self-deport, and especially the families where people do not agree on what to do or how to handle this. She's been following the producers for most of this year. The parents are definitely emphatically not in agreement. If you look outside Raleigh, North Carolina, Jane Reverie is a high school math teacher. She's a citizen born here, which you might think would mean that her husband, Fidel, who's from Mexico, would have a path to citizenship. But there's a longstanding part of immigration that Fidel crossed into the States of Leeway back when he was 18, left, and came back into the States. Because of that, he kept.
Thank you all for that.
Are you going back up to New York?
Brief recess. We'll continue on our agenda now for public hearing number two on the proposed substantial amendment on the Program Year 25 Annual Action Plan. And this public hearing is for public comment only. We will not be taking any action tonight. Action will be taken on the Program Year 2025 HUD Entitlement Annual Action Plan at a subsequent council meeting. So, this is for public comment only tonight. So, do we have anyone signed up for, to speak for this item? No? Okay. Then we will move on to item three. Oh.
Open and close.
Okay.
Yes.
It's not in my script, which is a little unusual. But since it was public comment only and there wasn't an ordinance or anything, it threw me off. So, okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. Has anyone changed their mind and wants to speak as part of this? All right, then I will close the public hearing. And now, we will move on to item number three. Public hearing on tax exemption request for real property owned by Old Southwest, Inc. We have one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion in second.
Move the ordinance, second.
Thank you, Councilmembers Volleson and Hagan. And Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance exempting from real estate property taxation certain real property located in the city of Roanoke owned by Old Southwest, Inc., a Virginia 501(c)(3) nonprofit corporation, provided for an effective, an effective date and dispensing with a second reading of this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Ms. McCoy. David Collins, Deputy City Attorney, is here, and I'll invite him to come forward and share any information he'd like to regarding this request.
Good evening, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor McGuire, members of council, and Ms. Turner. Old Southwest, Inc. has applied for tax exemption on the two properties it owns located on Day Avenue. Originally, in their application, they also requested exemption of properties owned by Old Southwest on Allison Avenue. However, they have withdrawn those Allison Avenue properties from request for exemption. Before I get into details, let me explain the statutory framework, how we arrived here. Under the Constitution of Virginia, certain property is automatically exempt from taxes. That includes cemeteries, property owned by the state and political subdivisions, property that is used for libraries. In addition to that, other property can be exempt as well, subject to approval by ordinance by the local governing body. These exemptions first came to the Director of Real Estate Valuation. The Director determined that those properties Old Southwest was seeking exemption from are not automatically exempt. These two properties are public, are used by Old Southwest for public parks. And under the Constitution of Virginia, the local governing body has the authority to grant exemption for these parcels if it is used for, owned by nonprofit, used for public park charitable benevolent purposes. And considering the exemption, the governing body has to consider several questions, such as, is there a 501(c)(3) certificate granted to the organization? Does the organization have an A B C license? Is more than a reasonable salary paid to the officers of the organization? What is the common good that the organization does for the public? And any other factors that the governing body may deem relevant in considering the exemption? Upon the Director of Real Estate Valuations denial of their exemption, the Tax Exemption Review Committee met to discuss the exemption, and we considered Old Southwest's request. Please inform me that after considering the request, there are no concerns that the Tax Exemption Review Committee had. And for that reason, we are here today to, on Old Southwest's request for the, for the exemption pursuant to this public hearing. With me or with, here tonight, is Mary Ann Mayer from Old Southwest, who can answer any questions, and I invite her to the podium if you would like to hear from her.
Heather, welcome. Glad to have you here tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm here to answer any questions about this property and its use as a privately-owned public park. I do want to say that they, these were two buildable lots that were gifted to Old Southwest quite a number of years ago, and they laid fallow. And in the time that I've lived in Roanoke the last six years, we took a public interest survey about what to do with these park, these properties, because there was some interest in just selling them, they're two buildable lots. And the feeling was that people in the neighborhood wanted them to be retained as urban green space and for the good of the public and for the good of the neighborhood. But also, Old Southwest, Inc. historically has always looked for collaborations with the city and very joyfully has participated in them. And we saw this as another opportunity to do that because we decided to create what's called a pocket park, and not just any old park, but one that actually supports the implementation of the city's climate action plan, best practices about stormwater runoff, our B-City designation, rebuilding the tree canopy, and really trying to educate others. So, even though it can be an entertainment space, there are passive signage that is there that teach people about, it's all native plants, native trees and bushes, encouraging wildlife to be there. We have an old box elder tree there that is getting to the end of its life, and when it, when it goes, it's living way. It'll still be beneficial because we'll cut it as a snag that can be used. And we're hoping that this is a model that people will be able to see how to do sustainable landscaping in their own neighborhoods, on their own properties, and really support what the city's trying to do here for, you know, the good of all of us. So, thank you for letting me say a few things, and I'd be happy to, the other thing, I guess I will say, is the tax dollars that we can save on this will actually benefit the city more because it'll be put back into maintaining this property and also maintenance of the Gish House, which belongs to the city and we use as our neighborhood gathering space.
Thank you. All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. And do we have any citizens signed up to speak on this matter? I will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments by council?
I do have one question. So, currently, they're vacant lots, and you use it as a public park? So, or does people have to get permission to use it or?
So, currently, they're actually gardens and a park. They were just sort of fallow lots. And I don't, you know, we haven't really worked out all of the conditions, but what we do as a neighborhood is we, we create public events and invite the public to them. So, we just had a big porch fest and ribbon cutting, and we had vendors there teaching about sustainable landscaping and climate and that sort of thing. We've also had hands-on workshops there to learn about how to get rid of turf grass without using herbicides, how to mulch using leaves and natural things. So, right now, it's open to the public. There will be a sign that says, "Opened on till dusk." People can walk through the park and passively enjoy it. And pretty much, it's Old Southwest at this point controlling if there's an event there. So, I don't think someone's going to come and have a bar mitzvah on the property without at least checking in with us on that.
Do you rent it out for any fees?
We have not rented it, and we have no intentions of renting it right now, really. It's a space for free enjoyment.
Questions? Yes, Mr. Hagan.
I have a couple of questions, and some of these are more legal-based, so I might have to ask David.
Oh, maybe David can answer those.
First off, though, you know, I was at the ribbon cutting. Y'all did an amazing job with it. I'm more thinking about long-term. So, what happens in the event that Old Southwest either loses their 501(c)(3) or, you know, they decide 10, 20, 30 years from now, you know what, we have this property here, let's build a mega complex, a skyscraper, something like that? What, would that continue? Would their tax exempt status continue, or is that like addressed in the statute?
In order to receive and continue to receive the benefit of the exemption, the property would have to be continued being used as a, as a public park. If it was not, the exemption would, would be lost.
Okay, cool. And not saying Old Southwest would ever do that, I'm just thinking long-term. So, thank you.
Other questions? All right, then I think we're ready to vote. Madam Clerk?
Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye. And the ordinance is adopted. Thank you all for your time tonight. It's been nice to see the transformation of it. Our next item is public hearing to consider granting an easement to the Western Virginia Water Authority on Roanoke County parcel identification number 0.37.13-04-30.00-0000. We have one measure and ordinance, and I'll entertain a motion in second.
Move the ordinance, second.
Thank you, Councilmembers Nash and Volleson. Madam Clerk, will you please read the title paragraph?
An ordinance authorizing the conveyance of a public water line easement and a public sanitary sewer easement along the property owned by the city of Roanoke, located in Roanoke County, adjacent to Peters Creek Road, bearing county parcel identification number 0.37.13-04-03.00-0000 to the Western Virginia Water Authority upon certain terms and conditions and dispensing with a second reading by title of this ordinance.
Thank you. Ian Shaw, our Stormwater Division Manager, is here, I suppose, to answer any questions that any of us might have. I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any citizens wishing to be heard on this matter? I will close the public hearing. Any questions or comments by council? Mr. Nash.
Is this near the Audi dealership on Peters Creek? Like, where, because I was looking at this, trying to figure out where it is, and I can't tell where it is. Is this near Audi, like the?
If you look further north from the Audi dealership, maybe half a mile, quarter mile further north. So, heading, if you're heading from the Audi dealership towards Northside High School, it'd be on the county side of Peters Creek, heading, heading north.
Any other questions? All right, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Volleson.
Aye.
Ms. Powers.
Aye.
Mr. Hagan.
Aye.
Ms. Sanchez Jones.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGuire.
Aye.
Mr. Nash.
Aye.
And Mayor Cobb.
Aye, and the ordinance is adopted. Thank you. We finish up tonight with our hearing of citizens upon public matters, and we set this time aside as a priority for citizens to be heard. As deemed appropriate matters, will be referred to our city manager for response, recommendation, or report back to council. For those who may be speaking at council for the first time tonight, when your name is called, we just invite you to come to the podium. The mic is live, so you don't have to worry about adjusting the mic or anything. In the upper right-hand corner, there's a little box with three lights, green, yellow, and red. Green means start. Yellow means you have one minute left, and then red means wrap it up or stop. And if you're mid-sentence or thought, we'll work with you to finish up. And I believe everyone will have three minutes tonight, so Madam Clerk, if you'll call our, those citizens who signed up to speak.
First two will be, and please forgive me on the pronunciation on this one, Fan Niggin Bean, and followed by Kathleen Jennings.
Thank you. Good evening, members of council, Mayor Cobb, Vice Mayor McGuire, and Ms. Turner. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here as a concerned parent and P T A member who cares deeply about the success of Roanoke City Public Schools and the long-term health of our city. First, I want to address the capital fund balance that R C P S was required to return to the city. On behalf of concerned families of Rising Middle School, Patrick Henry, and William Fleming High School, we want to know how and if those funds would be allocated back to the schools. That conversation must be council's top priority. Families are growing increasingly concerned because the overcrowding at our high schools is no longer a looming issue. It's here. Patrick Henry's functional capacity is 1,674 students. However, enrollment is over by roughly 400 students. William Fleming's functional capacity is 1,649, and enrollment is over 300. William Fleming's functional capacity is 1,649, and enrollment is over 300 students. RCPS cannot move forward with ordering trailers to relieve this pressure until there is clarity on the capital fund balance. The delay pushes RCPS further behind in planning, procurement, and construction timelines. Please make this discussion a top priority so that solutions can move forward now. And secondly, parents are also concerned about the delay in the city's revenues report for the last fiscal year, which was due on, what I understand, is September 30th. RCPS cannot complete its own audit without these numbers, and the delay has already impacted their financial planning. I appreciate all of you for your commitment to transparency. Transparent financial reporting is essential for trust and good governance. I ask council to please prioritize both the capital fund balance discussion and the release of the city's revenue report, because our children will suffer the impact of our inaction first. Thank you for your time.
Hi. Okay. Sorry, I have to write everything down. It's been a busy, busy couple days. Good evening, members of council and Ms. Powers. I want to first express appreciation to everyone that has taken time to meet with members of the Central Council of PTAs prior to this evening, and we're looking forward to having more listening sessions with y'all in the next few months. On behalf of the Council of PTAs, we appreciate you taking the time to listen to parents and educators in Roanoke City. I am concerned about the PNF group's use of blanket funding statistics to justify cutting school funding in Roanoke City. The cost per student to educate a student in Southwest, in urban Southwest Virginia school districts, cannot be compared to the cost of educating a student in eastern Virginia, where the high percentage of military families means a higher percentage of federal funding for education. This is comparing apples to oranges. You know, statistics, lies, all that kind of line of thought. The year-over-year funding numbers, which had faced, look like local school funding is increasing, do not take into account inflation, which would, in effect, make any increase negligible. I also want to extend support for the reappropriation request from Roanoke City Schools' former fund balance back to Roanoke City Schools. Reallocating this funding back to schools will allow funding and time to order learning cottages, their trailers, which are needed to alleviate overcrowding. The timely release of this funding will allow William Fleming and Patrick Henry High Schools to have these learning cottages ready for the 2026-2027 school year. As of now, these high schools are 20% overcapacity, and the number of students educated at these high schools is only projected to increase. Thank you for your time and support of our Roanoke City School students, families, educators, and community.
Thank you.
And our last two speakers, Misty Vickers and Angela Byrd.
Good evening, council members. It's kind of fun to be on the side. I know many of you a little bit on the streets and loving seeing the way you guys show up in our community. Thank you, Mayor Cobb. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Thank you, council, and Ms. Powers, and everyone else that I don't know your names of. I'm sorry. I'm not going to be as eloquent as these ladies. I attended my first Roanoke City School Board meeting two months ago, and in that time, I learned that they are having learning cottages to deal with our overcrowding. That means our past school board, past city council, have not done the appropriate responsibilities to, in order to plan for the growth of Roanoke City. You are commissioned here today to not just put the Band-Aids on past problems that you have been handed, but is to take power and to leverage it in such ways to ensure that our children have proper education, have it properly funded. Now, I don't know why certain things were marked from the agenda tonight regarding some of the financial stuff, and I can, listen, I'm going to echo everything these ladies have said, but at the end of the day, I need you guys to understand that the cottages is a Band-Aid. We need a third high school. Okay? We are in trouble. My daughter's going to go into middle school. I'm really worried about overcrowding. I think we know that we have to address the funding issues. We have to get creative. Your job is to be creative in finding tax revenues in ways in which our schools can be abundantly supplied with finances. We know that federal funding is all kind of crazy right now, don't we? We all know what's going down the pipe. And at the end of the day, state allocations are a whole different, you know, we got to have that talk in Richmond soon. But right now, we can't even rely on those people. The city of Roanoke and its citizens and the children rely on you. You are our leaders. You are the creative minds behind which we can fund our public schools. We have to get creative. We have to think outside of this. So I don't know if we need to have a think group of creative ways, hire some consultants, find new ways in which we have to find funding. But I'm going to echo a few more things, and that's one matter, because you guys know I'm going to come for two things. The second thing is Valley Metro. Valley Metro has had a 10-year plan twice now, where it has a plan to extend its route to our DMV location, which used to be lying in the Roanoke City District. Voters in Roanoke City cannot access the DMV on public bus lines. I don't know if this is voter suppression. Some lawyer somewhere can decide that. But at the end of the day, I work at Elm Manor. I have 40 residents in my care. These people have disabilities, and they're seniors. Two, no, I'm sorry. One-fourth of them have cars. That means about 10 people have cars. That means about 30 people rely on public transportation, friends and family. Right now, even if they have the STAR program and they qualify for that, they can't access that. It's a mile just outside of the last bus stop. I have spoke to Roanoke County. I have spoke to you. And I have spoke to Valley Metro. And I don't understand why we cannot figure out how to have a big boy and big girl conversation to make sure we all come to the table to do what's right for the citizens of Roanoke. Thank you, guys.
All right. So I've changed about all of the things I was going to say ahead of time while you guys were discussing things today. So first of all, thank you for having us and listening to our concerns. I really, the reason I changed most of it is because of the way in which you guys have all talked about all the things. I don't usually attend these. This is not like my cool Monday, Tuesday night hang. So I, but I know when I voted for these people, that you guys were good people, and I knew that you would do good things for the city, because that's why I voted. And I Googled every single thing I could about all of you, right? But sitting here today, it really, like, dawned on me that, like, you guys were asking really good questions. You're getting down to stuff that is really important for the city. And the things I heard you say and really, like, opened my eyes a little bit, and the way in which I think about things in the city, is the way you talked about balancing the decisions about long-term continuum of care, and how questions were really geared towards long-term viability. Like, are you going to be able to change this in 20 years? Is this going to happen in this way? And then, you know, in 20 years, are we doing the right thing for our city? Right? And when I think of that, I think of our kids. It's really hard for me, because I'm a behavior analyst. All I do is work with kids with disruptive behaviors, and I work very hard for them. And all I can think about is what, like, what good people you are that might still be making decisions that are harder, but also may not be the right ones. And may not be ones that we're giving to you. You don't have a choice, right? You come in and you get what's on the docket, right? That's not, it's not that you want to sit here and talk about P-95006, but you have to, and that's part of your job. Okay? And I don't want that job. Doesn't look fun to me. But what I noticed here today is that you guys all very much care about your city. I don't know how you could do a better job of showing that you care for your city by funding your schools fully, not just Band-Aiding. I think that was a great term, by the way. I'm just going to seal that. Band-aiding it. That's just not the right choice for the longevity of our schools. Right? I have elementary school teachers, or elementary school, I hope, maybe one day, that'd be great, but elementary school kids that I think they are constantly asking about, what do our senators do? Why do people want to be president? And why do they want to have these jobs? And I cannot wait to tell them that their city council has fully funded and made sure they have a high school that they don't have to run into all their classmates all day long. Right? There's enough natural fighting that goes on. We don't need to make more, because they're running into each other, and they have no coordination. So if we can really bring this to the forefront, I think anybody, I got five seconds, I think anybody would agree that our children are our future, and therefore, like, make those decisions that way. Okay?
Thank you very much. Thanks to everyone who came out and stayed late to speak tonight. You know, it's not a bad Monday night gig. We are going to recess into one last closed meeting, and once we finish that, we'll come back out to adjourn for the evening. So we'll go into recess now. Thank you all for coming.